Good evening and welcome to this Planning Commission. The date is Monday, October 14th. Will everyone please rise for pledges of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The first item of tonight's agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes that they'd like to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on is the actual minutes for the approval for the minutes for the September 23rd, 2013 meeting. Did anyone have any changes they need to make? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes for the September 23rd, 2013 meeting?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
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 I abstain.
Okay. Anybody else? Julie, you're good? All right. Tonight we have several public hearings. The first one is the variance 2013-09. The location of this variance is 7485 Office Ridge Circle and 7490 Marketplace Drive. And the request is to permit a side yard setback of zero feet. City code requires a 20-foot minimum side yard setback in the office zoning district. With that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward? Tell us about your project. Please also state your name and spell your last name for city record, please.
Good evening. My name is Victor Pearlbachs. That's P.E.R.L.B.A.C.H.S. I'm an architect with the Design Partnership Architects. Our offices are located at 111 Third Avenue South, Minneapolis, 55401. And I'm here to represent the project for Elam Care this evening. Elam Care Incorporated occupies the existing building at 7485 Office Ridge Circle. Their organization is growing and needs additional space. The building east of their location became available and is the best option to meet their growth needs. The two buildings are approximately 30 feet apart with the property line centered between the two. There is also approximately a 12-inch grade change between the first levels of the two buildings. Connecting the two buildings with an enclosed walkway is necessary to meet the employees' daily work needs. And the link, an enclosed link would also provide a safe and ADA compliant travel route, you know, between the two. The exterior finishes will be the same as exist in the business park, the redwood siding and trim boards, and will blend, we feel, blend in very nicely. I also wanted to mention that the Business Owners Association has provided their support of this proposed project between the two buildings. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
I just have one quick question, and we'll go to city staff for their report as well. How long is the walkway? I know it said it didn't here, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's, well, it isn't straight across. It takes a little bit of a bend. It's probably close to 40 feet long.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. If we have any additional questions, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see staff take us through the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this variance meets the three-part test for reasonable use of the property, unique circumstances, and will not alter the character of locality. And the staff recommendation is for the commission to adopt or should approve final order 2013-09.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns about this particular variance? Not seeing any. Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any concerns? Okay. Not seeing any. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the final order 2013-09.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you move forward with your project. Thank you very much. Next item is the Noterman property. The location of that property is 16180 Flying Cloud Drive. The request is a comprehensive guide plan change from rural residential to neighborhood commercial on 1.07 acres, a comprehensive guide plan amendment to expand the Musa boundary to include 11.5 acres and a planned unit development concept review on 11.5 acres. With that being stated, will the proponent of the project please come forward? Again, state your name, spell your last name for city record, and tell us about your project, please.
Mr. Chairman, members, my name is John Shardlow, S.H.A.R.D.L.O.W. I'm a planning consultant with Stan Tech Consulting, Inc. I have a presentation that is available of the folks in the back, and put that up, please. Very briefly, I'd like to make some introductions. In the front row with me are the property owners Bert and Bonnie Noterman, and also the immediately adjacent across Spring Road neighbor Seaver Peterson, who we've been working with very closely with this project as well. Let me give you just a very brief summary of what we're requesting. You noted it, Mr. Chairman, but let me just clarify what we're not asking for, as well as what we're asking for. This will result in a land use change to 1.07 acres. That is currently rural residential, that would need to be re-guided to neighborhood commercial to be added to the existing Lions Tap property, and I'll explain that with a map in a minute. And also the expansion of the Metropolitan Urban Service area. One of the main objectives of this application is to be able to provide public sanitary sewer and water service to the Lions Tap. And in order to do that, we have to amend their, extend the Musa line. We're not in a position today to request the final site plan approval or rezoning for any of this because part of this whole issue is predicated on the final alignment, the realignment of Spring Road. And so until we know that, we can't have a definitive legal description. And so, working with staff, we decided it would be better to come forward with a planned unit development review for the commercial area only. There was some question in one of the letters that was received that Ms. Kleeman was kind enough to share about whether or not this proposal included any expansion of the Lions Tap building itself. And the answer is no, it doesn't. This is simply to accommodate some additional parking to be added to the Lions Tap. The other thing I want to be very clear in telling the commission and those in the audience as well is that there's no residential rezoning requested with this application. And the residential really isn't included in the PUD concept either. There is nothing being proposed for residential at this time. As of right now, the land is guided and zoned rural residential, which means they're entitled to one unit per 10 acres. And so before any additional residential development could occur, there'd need to be a guide plan change from rural residential to low-density residential and a rezoning. Neither of those are before the commission this evening. Again, very briefly in the background, I included some of this in the letter that I submitted, but as you may know, there has been some form of commercial establishment on this site since the 1930s. The Notermans have owned the Lions Tap since 1977, and the last major renovation on the subject property where they added significantly to the building itself was in 1985. Also important to note that the Notermans have been working closely with the city staff, as my friend Michael Franzen can attest, to talk about how they would ultimately get access to the residential portion of the property, since there is a substantial grade separation between it and the lower area where the Lions Tap is. And there's been a lot of discussion about that and how they would ultimately get municipal utilities, again, for quite a long time. My company actually, when I owned Dogger and Shardlow and Uben, we were the planners that worked with the Charleston's and were the people who did the proposal for the Charleston's. And at that time, the Notermans were in discussion with the city staff and us about, is this the time when we figure out access to that highland and development and so forth? Which led to consultation with city engineer Rod Rue and others, and the staff at that time said that they thought the best way to gain access to the residential portion of the property when it ultimately develops would be off of Eden Prairie Road. The other thing that's important to note is that there is an existing lift station that is on the northern end of Spring Road, and I'll show you a graphic about that in a bit. And one of the questions that we started this process is whether or not there was adequate capacity in that lift station to take the sanitary sewer that would be generated from the Lions Tap and surrounding properties. The city commissioned a study, had the engineering firm of SRF do an analysis, and that study confirmed that there is in fact sufficient capacity in that lift station to handle the sanitary sewer. So this is a graphic that shows the existing conditions. You can see the Lions Tap with 1.6 acres delineated with red, and then the larger adjacent 9.9 acre parcel also shown in red. The current alignment of Spring Road is located in this location. I've been working with the Notermans on a number of projects over the years, and I've known for quite a while in consultation with them that at some point they would like to develop their property. They were contacted by Hennepin County as part of the Flying Cloud Drive project, and basically contacted by the Highway Department and said, "We'd like to have some initial conversations with you about the impact of that development on your project." Well, one of the key things that the county was talking about, not surprisingly, if you're going to upgrade Flying Cloud Drive, was the closure of their direct curb cut onto Flying Cloud. Well, what that would do is effectively remove all of the parking that gains access via that parking, that driveway. And so that was obviously a concern to them. If you've ever been to the Lions Tap, you know that parking is at a premium, and so they would be severely damaged by that impact. Rather than waiting and fighting the condemnation and trying to get damages, we suggested to the county that maybe there's an opportunity for a win-win. As you know, Spring Road butts Flying Cloud Drive at an angle, and we said, "Would this be an opportunity with the upgrade of Flying Cloud to straighten out Spring Road?" And in straightening out Spring Road, would there be sufficient excess right-of-way that could be added to the Lions Tap? And so, again, we take a closer look at the Lions Tap. What we were essentially suggesting is moving Spring Road over to a more nearly perpendicular alignment. It's not perpendicular, but certainly better and safer than it is today. And as a result of that, there would be a total of just under seven tenths of an acre, which is shown here in green, that could be added to the Lions Tap to provide an opportunity to expand parking immediately adjacent to the Lions Tap. Again, as you may know, if you frequent the establishment or have been there, some of the employees have to walk across the street to get to their cars, and in busy times, patrons do as well. Obviously, that's never a safe situation, but if you're updating the capacity of Flying Cloud Road and it's going to be more traffic, it's only going to become a less safe condition in the future. So in order to facilitate this transition, there would be a total of .35 acres of land that would need to be taken by the adjacent property owner Seaver Peterson. Again, Mr. Peterson is here this evening. Again, one of the primary objectives for this is to be able to provide sanitary sewer service to the Lions Tap. They currently pay between $15,000 and $17,000 a year to service their septic system, and certainly something that they would like to avoid in the future if they could. And so by having municipal sewer and water, they would have the ability to have a better fire suppression in the event of a fire emergency, which would cause them savings in terms of their insurance, but fundamentally help them avoid this $15,000 to $17,000 annual service charge for their sanitary sewer. And as you know, if we're going to sewer the area, it has to be within the Musa. So that was the genesis for the request to expand the Musa. And so if you look at the proposed land use, you can see that the existing neighborhood commercial area, which is shown in the original red line here, would be expanded just very slightly on the north and west to allow the new parking lot to be squared off, and also a small triangle on this location. But the rest of the area, which was previously either in road right-of-way or low-density residential, is the other part of the request for the guide plan change. So the area which is in the red line here is the existing neighborhood commercial. Everything that's currently shown in pink would be neighborhood commercial if our application is approved. Again, very important to note that there's no request to change either the land use designation or the residential zoning. It's currently guided and zoned rural residential, and that will remain the case after this The other thing I wanted to just show you is the proposal to provide sewer to the subject property. Again, there's been discussions for a long time about what would be the best way to sewer the property. City engineer Rod Rue is here, and he can certainly provide additional background to the commission. But again, the basic direction we were given was to look at the idea of having a lift station down here that would collect the sewer from the Lions Tap and potentially surrounding property, and then convey that up to a point at which it would drain into the existing sewer at the Riley Creek Crossing. Again, we were on hold for our application for quite a while while the study was being done to determine if there was adequate capacity in that lift station, or if there was a need to do additional improvements to that lift station to be able to serve the subject property. And the response to that was that the finding is there is sufficient capacity. So the PUD concept, if you will, the only portion of it that we're looking at from a planned unit development standpoint at this time is what's shown in this diagram. And one of the things that we sought to do with this improvement was to increase the distance from Flying Cloud Drive to the driveway into the Lions Tap, to increase stacking distance and site distance. We'd originally hoped that we'd be able to do that quite a bit further to the north, but when we did the detailed analysis of that, it would have simply required too much grading and too much of a retaining wall. The land is just too steep there. And so we were able to increase it slightly to get a little bit more distance. In terms of the Hennepin County Transportation Department, they were okay with the driveway in its current location, and they're very happy with the fact that we were able to get additional spacing as well. So they were anxious to hear if we were able to come up with a solution that would move it further, but they also agreed with us when they looked at the grading and said that it wouldn't work very well. So, again, I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail because we're not asking for a detailed site plan review at this point. Before it could be built, it will need to come back for the rezoning and for the site plan approval. But generally speaking, the area that was previously parking down here accessed with a curb cut off of Flying Cloud Drive will be filled in so that it can become parking access from the north. This driveway will be closed. And so you can see it's a very straightforward perpendicular parking arrangement on both sides of the center island with landscaping, very simple, straightforward circulation in, and an efficient parking area there. And likewise, over on this side of the property where the additional right-of-way can be added to the Lions Tap property, we get another very simple, straightforward circulation system, perpendicular parking, good site distance, and we'll end up being able to get an additional 45 parking spaces total. So there are 76 existing parking stalls. There would be a total of 121 if this goes forward for an additional 45 parking spaces, which would make a huge difference for the Lions Tap. Just very quickly, we did, again, see the letters that were sent in from some of the neighboring property owners, including Mary Lou Carlson and Dean and Karen Edstrom and Joel and Kelly Wiggert, and they raised some concerns about the expansion of the Musa line, river bluff protection, retaining walls, and that effect that they may have on wildlife corridors. And then there was some concern about the enforceability of a future planned unit development if a planned unit development was applied for and approved, which it is not currently being proposed. A couple of basic responses to that, and we'll be happy to answer questions. I think it's important to remember that the Noterman property is developable, and the Notermans have all of the rights of any other property owner who has land that's zoned rural residential, subject, of course, to all of the applicable codes and ordinances. The other thing is I read some of the letters is there was speculation as to what might come later, or what a future application might hold, and I would just ask that we focus on the application that's before us. I think that's the only fair thing to do. So we'd like to limit our comments to our current application and not a potential future application. With respect to the Metropolitan Urban Services line or the Musa line, the Musa line is really a regional growth management policy line, and it's intended to ensure that development occurs in the metropolitan area in an orderly, efficient, contiguous pattern, that cities aren't leapfrogging around and extending utility in a willy-nilly manner. The fact of the matter is, regionally, urban development is way past this line, all the way into Shakopee and Chaska. So in terms of a regional growth management strategy, the Musa line really doesn't have much merit or of a role to play. We've talked to the Metropolitan Council about this. The sector representative of the Metropolitan Council has said that this is a local issue. It's a local decision. They really don't care about it. And so I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. We're not asking for the rezoning to residential. We're not asking to sewer that property at this time, but it really isn't a Metropolitan Council issue, it's a local issue. And also, were references in, I think, all three of the letters to bluff protection ordinances. In the city of Eden Prairie, the term bluff is only found in your shoreline ordinance. And the shoreline ordinance is that area that is within 300 feet of lakes and rivers and streams. Simply stated, the Noterman property is not within a shoreline district, and so the bluff protection provisions in the shoreline district don't apply to the Noterman property. That doesn't mean that you don't have standards to protect development on steep slopes. It's simply covered in Section 11.60 where it relates to steep slopes. And again, at this point, we're not proposing any development on the area that contains the steep slopes. There also was some discussion about the fact that the expansion of the Lions Tap parking lot could have a detrimental effect on wildlife corridors and the movement of deer and turkeys from the highland area down to the river bottom. I'm going to show you a graphic in a minute to show again how limited the expansion of the parking lot is, but it really, in my opinion, isn't going to have any significant impact on wildlife movement. But I would say that it's important to note that the proposed improvements to Flying Cloud Drive are going to make that a busier, heavier classification roadway with more traffic moving at faster speeds. So I did write an email to the highway engineer who's in charge of the project and noted that concern, but I think that is an appropriate concern to bring forward, is obviously with more traffic going at higher speeds, that's going to be more of a safety issue down the road. So again, if you look and consider the impact on wildlife movement, there's really only this corner connection that is an extension, and this relatively small expansion of the parking lot here. So at least with all due respect, I don't think that that's going to have a material effect on wildlife movement through the area. So summary and conclusion, we really think that the realignment of Spring Road presents a great opportunity. It's an opportunity to my clients to avoid a costly condemnation dispute with Hennepin County. It's an opportunity for Hennepin County to avoid costly litigation, to deal with the damages that would obviously be at issue with this. Hennepin County agrees with that assessment, and Hennepin County has sent a letter to the city supporting this application, subject to all of your approvals, of course. The opportunity to expand the parking adjacent to the Lions Tap provides an opportunity to address the unsafe pedestrian crossings for employees and patrons, and it also provides the opportunity for a longtime, unique, iconic business in Eden Prairie to get away from having to spend $15,000 to $17,000 a year, every year, maintaining a septic system, and would have public water and sewer to serve the Lions Tap into the future. So in summary, we're looking for your approval for the expansion of the Musa so that we can serve the Lions Tap property and potentially in the future, adjacent residential property. We will be coming back with a site plan approval for definitive plans for the Lions Tap property. At the same time, we would be coming back with the rezoning application for the Lions Tap. Just to reiterate, we're not asking for any approval for a land use guide change or rezoning for the rural residential, or any development for the rural residential at this time. Thank you for your patience and happy to answer any questions.
I just have one quick question, thank you, Mr. Shardlow, and then we'll go to city staff. Can you show us on one of those maps where the current Musa line is now and what you are proposing?
Yeah, unfortunately, the only map that shows the Musa is a citywide map that's at very large scale, and so when you blow it up, the lines get pretty fuzzy. The one on the left is the existing Musa line, and you can see there's actually even, I believe, a donut hole in it where there's some land that's outside the Musa within that line. But this is the existing configuration, and we're simply proposing to take it down to circumnavigate the entire Noterman property.
So it's above lines, it's above basically the parking lot Lions Tap, and you want to bring it all the way down to the road, essentially?
Exactly.
In simple terms.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie, I think you have some staff report notes for it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as Mr. Shardlow reviewed with you, the request is for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to extend the Musa to serve the Notermans property and to amend the guide plan to add an additional, little over an acre, to the neighborhood commercial area. They are also asking for a PUD concept review on the commercial portion of their site. Staff is recommending approval subject to the comments that are included in your staff report. And I would like to note that as Mr. Shardlow discussed, we did receive three letters from adjacent property owners that were concerned about the application, and those were provided to you for your review. Generally speaking, the neighbors were not necessarily opposed to the extension of the Musa to serve the restaurant, but they were concerned about the extension to serve the residential portion and what that may mean for approvals moving forward.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, did you all get those letters as well in your packets? Did everyone see those? I want to make sure those are available to you. Okay, very good. Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns with this project? Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I just have one preliminarily before it's open to the public. The project proponent mentioned that there was a Hennepin County letter, and I did not receive that in my packet. I'm not sure if anybody else was able to read the county's comments on this particular subject.
Mr. Shardlow, you had mentioned a county letter, I believe. Somebody have that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the applicant did provide a letter from Hennepin County stating that they were consenting to the application because the application does include some of the property that would ultimately be theirs.
Okay.
Indicating that, yes, they are in conversation with Mr. Noterman and Mr. Shardlow and Mr. Peterson about this realignment process moving forward.
And generally, they agreed with it. Is that pretty much the extent of the letter?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. Anybody else have any questions before we move to the audience? Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions or concerns specifically for this project? If so, so now would be the time where you please state your name and your, spell your last name and give us your address, please. Thank you very much.
Yes, my name is Dean Edstrom, E.D.S.T.R.O.M. My wife and I reside at 10133 Eden Prairie Road. Our property is immediately adjacent to the subject property on the west side, the whole west line, and also for about 100, 200 feet on the extreme northwesterly part of the property. It's hard to know where to begin. There's a lot here. First of all, let me say what we really don't have a problem with. We don't have a problem with the land exchange with the county and Seaver Peterson and the Notermans to do whatever they're going to do with the Spring Road down there. That all seems to make sense as far as we're concerned. We don't have a problem in principle with the idea of serving sewer and water, extending Musa line down to Lions Tap. I think, you know, we all know that it's probably necessary. They have an inadequate septic system at this point, there's no question. I think everybody agreed that Lions Tap needs to be served with sewer and water. Expense, whatever it may be, is only part of it. The problem that I have, I mean, a number of problems I have. First of all, we have been trying to protect the bluff in Eden Prairie for years and years and years. You know, very recently, Eden Prairie has successfully defended the bluff, I believe, east of Spring Road, between Seaver's Farm and the new development on top of the bluff up by the airport, and also between Eden Prairie Road and Dell Road. There've been trade-offs and things done with property owners in order to protect the bluff. I think you're all aware of that because those things have been before your commission was in the last couple of years. We've been trying to protect the bluff also between Eden Prairie Road and Spring Road. It's a tough thing to do. There've been numerous attempts, proposals in the past to try to develop the bluff, and we've opposed those. This is the biggest segment of that property, and if the bluff is developed in that sector, we're going to lose, I think, at least a linchpin piece of one of Eden Prairie's great amenities. When I look at Eden Prairie, my wife and I have lived here for 40 years in the same We have many wonderful things in this city, including the park and recreation system, the vistas, things like that that really make Eden Prairie what it is. And I think, you know, in some part goes to Eden Prairie getting recognized as, you know, number one city in the country a couple of times, and always being ranked very, very highly across the country. If we start moving down the bluff in this area, I think that's going to be harmful, certainly to the concept of protecting the bluff. I recognize this property is a tough one to deal with because it's all bluff, other than the Lions Tap restaurant itself. If the Musa line needs to be moved- If the Musa line needs to be moved to include Lions Tap, then my recommendation would be, fine, run a sort of a gerrymandered line down Spring Road to enclose Lions Tap and provide the sewer and water it needs. And what I'm suggesting with that, and I have to say it came as a, pretty much of a shock to me, that what seemed to be an understood assumption between the developer here and the staff is that it would be running from Eden Prairie Road rather than down from Hennepin Village East. What if a line can be run down from Hennepin Village East, and it ought to be able to be done, should be running the east side of Spring Road so as to avoid the spring, the northern spring, which everybody wants to preserve in this city, it's very important, and then across the road to Lions Tap, that could be done. And wouldn't have any negative impact on the bluff as a diagonal line running down from Eden Prairie would, and would not, you know, lend itself to development of the bluff for residential purposes. If that could be accomplished, that, I think, would be a wonderful solution for the city, for the environment, and for Lions Tap. The idea of extending Musa line to cover that whole area, to my mind, makes it, if not inevitable, very likely that there will be residential development on the bluff. Whether it's one home, two homes, 10 homes, I don't know what it'd be. And we're talking about a site of, what, nine, 10 acres here, something like that? I don't know how many homes you can jam on there. If you put the Musa, if you extend the Musa line to encompass that entire area, and there's this PUD concept, frankly, maybe I'm not reading clearly, and I don't think it's very clearly stated exactly what the proposal here is, but if the PUD includes that rural property, then, as you well know, based on all the development plans you've had over the last several years, you do a PUD, you wind up with situations with trade-offs, density transfers, all kinds of different things can be done to make sure that, notwithstanding the city's slopes protections and slopes ordinance, that development gets jammed in and you wind up with tanning walls and everything else, and you say, oh, we protected the slopes, but you really haven't, you haven't protected the bluff. So if there needs to be a PUD, once again, I would respect that PUD only to the footprint of the tap itself and not extend that to the rest of the bluff. So that way, it may postpone today when there's some further discussion about developing the bluff, or at least it postpones it and does not create a situation where you've lost the protections of the Musa line, you lose a protection afforded by a PUD or any other kind of action that would suggest that there's going to be some further action in the future to develop that area, and you wind up relying only on the slopes ordinance to protect the bluff. I don't, I served in the city council 30 years ago, I've watched the city as it has developed over all the years, basically in a very fine manner, but I do know it was very difficult to protect things once you start the salami tactics of changing things a piece at a time. Final thing I'd like to say is that even though I've discussed with staff a bit, and I would say sort of hypothetically, and almost like this can't occur kind of scenario, I was shocked tonight to understand that, in fact, the preferred access route they're talking about to this quote residential area and for the sewer and water would be across our property. There's no other way to do it. So if you vote in favor of this, in effect, what you are saying is, Dean and Karen Edstrom, you are going to be subject to a taking, to a condemnation on your property in order to serve this private benefit. And frankly, that's unacceptable. Thank you very much. I'd like to say that Joel Uyghur, our neighbor, is not here yet. He was planning to get here, I think he will be here, but he, I think, also would like to address.
He's on the other side there.
Well, there he is.
So don't speak bad about him.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to decide who best to answer some of those questions. Mike, you got any advice? I would love to put up a map again. Mr. Shardlow, maybe you can explain a little bit about the Musa and specifically what Mr. Edstrom was talking about as far as changing it up a little bit.
Well, let me first of all clarify that we're not talking about the sewer coming from Eden Prairie Road. We're talking about the sewer coming along Spring Road up from a lift station up to this point.
Okay.
So it's not affecting his property, it's not coming through his property.
Thank you, thank you, that was not included.
That's the purpose of this graphic, so that's why it was here. And again, the city engineer can clarify that. The other issue of access, you can see that there's existing lots to the north of the subject property and parks and open space all along this edge. Again, this is a developable piece of property. We talk about being an asset to the city of Eden Prairie. It's owned privately, and the notarments have paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes for their private property. If it were to be developed, it would be developed sensitively if it were developed at all, but they, as a private property owner with the right to develop their property are, have the right to get access. And Mr. Notarman has been in consultation with the city for a long time about where should that access come from, and what we have been told is that somewhere off of this segment of Eden Prairie Road is the logical place, staff's position, for getting access into the development of this property.
So if I'm understanding correctly, your point being it's already developable, developable, and they could already put homes on that property as is?
One home as it's currently guided and zoned.
Right, because it's rural.
And so if you were to approve our application this evening, the notarments would be spending something in excess of a couple hundred thousand dollars for the extension of sanitary sewer. They would have the right to extend sanitary sewer at this point to serve one lot on that bluff, which isn't a bluff, it's steep slopes.
Great. Okay. Commissioners, any comments for Mr. Shardlow before we go over to city staff? Okay. Julie and/or Mike, any comments?
You know, back in 1976, I was a young planner working for the city of Fredley when the land planning act came out and they drew this Musa boundary. Hundreds of thousands of acres in the Twin Cities, going over lakes and creeks and trees and wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas. And there wasn't any thought at that time from the Metropolitan Council, how are you going to protect those resources? What Eden Prairie did before we developed our wetland ordinance and our tree protection ordinance and our steep slope ordinance, we kind of negotiated how you would preserve these features through planning developments. And basically, we granted some exceptions to the city code in exchange for them not going anywhere near the wetland or staying off of the steep slope. But over the course of the years, even the Metropolitan Council and their environmental section were encouraging cities to develop environmental regulations, and so we kind of followed suit and put those protections in place. The last major Musa line amendment we did was back in the early 1990s, and the original thought was to take it all the way down to Highway 212. Through the process with homeowners, with the council, with the commission, and the Metropolitan Council, we drew the line farther up. Because at that time, the Metropolitan Council was looking at the Musa line not just for the order of the extension of sewer and water, it was also to help their mission of protecting regional resources. And they looked at the river corridor and the bluff area along the corridor as something that was worthwhile for the region to protect. And that's why it has a sort of meandering line that follows a contour elevation somewhere around 880 feet above sea level. There also was a tying period where there was a bluff committee that was appointed by the city council, and I was on part of that. And it was made up of developers and landowners to figure out the best way to preserve the bluff along the river. And we couldn't gain consensus on it, other than the rules the city had in place at time, which was the shoreline ordinance and our tree ordinance and our steep slope ordinance, that we were just going to follow our own rules and protect us in the best way we can. The best way that you protect this type of slope is to acquire that. And we had bond referendums, we acquired the Richard T. Anderson Park area, which is along 212. We've had development proposals, which was Settlers West over towards Chanhassen, we had Hennepin Village, we had Greta Ridge, and as part of the negotiation process, we were able to obtain land along those slopes. And on much smaller parcels, probably for maybe Mr. Stoltz remembers this, some land along Turnbull Road, where we granted some exception in a lot sizes to preserve more of the slopes down into that river. So in looking at this particular piece of property, yeah, you can say that not extending the Musa line now protects it for the time being, but they still have the right to put up a pole barn, and they can have agricultural uses, and they could put up a 15,000 square foot home, much like one that's currently under construction in Bellarby, and you'd have a large septic tank and a drain field and a backup system. So even if the Musa line covered that property now, it makes more sense from a staff standpoint, they have the ability to have the sewer and water. Why dig up all that property just to put in the septic tank and a drain field? Commission, I think, is bigger control over land development, which is discretionary is on a guide plan change. City has no obligation to grant a comprehensive guide plan change. The applicant can request it. You have to figure out what are the reasons that compel the city to want to make that particular change. And usually, guide plan changes are accommodated not only by a PUD concept, by a zoning action, so you can see what is physically being proposed. It's a lot easier to decide on a guide plan change if you know a little bit about what's being proposed. For all we know, the notarments might come in and say, hey, we just want two houses, we want three houses, and as part of the deal, if you allow us to do that, we'll preserve 85% of the bluff and kind of the horse treating that we might do on that particular piece in the future.
I'm just absorbing that. Thank you.
I had a question.
Yes, please.
For city staff, I was curious, what is the minimum parking requirement for this property?
We kind of made up one today. Well, that's the long and the short of it. When it was approved, it was approved at one for three seats and they're conforming. We changed our restaurant rules. It's not quite a restaurant, which is one for two seats, which has dancing and liquor, and it's not quite one that doesn't have liquor because they serve beer, and what makes sense is something around one to two and a half. And so if you look at what they're adding in terms of the parking to meet their needs, we feel that that's going to be adequate to accommodate their business and their employees on the property.
So currently, their parking is less than actually what city code would recommend?
It's currently less than as our code is written today.
Okay.
Because they were approved before we had the regulations, they're considered conforming.
Grandfather.
Any good business person is going to put in as much parking as they need because that's good for their business.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, go ahead.
I have a question for staff. It seems there was a lot of talk about sewer. Is water going to be a part of this, both sewer and water installation? And I'm kind of confused a little bit also as to if it's coming from Eden Prairie Road southeast to serve the property, or if it was coming from the lift station of Spring Road, or if water's coming from Eden Prairie Road and the sewer is being lifted up to Spring Road, and then also if there's been any due diligence on the cost structure of improvements of this and who's going to fit that bill.
To clarify, the sewer, what's being proposed or being looked at, and it hasn't been looked at in any detail yet, but there would be a lift station down by the Lions Tap that would pump the sewage back up to the Spring Road lift station. So, and there probably would be some gravity lines in that area as well. The water would also be extended, but the water main would be taken down Spring Road, would go down Flying Cloud Drive to the west and up Eden Prairie Road so that we have a loop system so that we don't have that long dead end that would be created with a, just extending it down to Lions Tap. So that would just be something that we would coordinate with the county project as well as the Eden Prairie Road connection down to Flying Cloud Drive, which is another project that, in the area that is being looked at. The issue with, or the study that would be needed for Spring Road has not been started. The one that Mr. Shardlow was referring to was a, we had a design assumptions we'd made back 10 years ago when the Spring Road lift station was designed, basically how much, how many, what the land use was in the service area of that lift station. We kind of dug up that study, relooked at those land uses to make sure that we're kind of consistent with the assumptions, as well as looking at, was this area included and/or could it be included if it wasn't? So we went through that, we still, we haven't finalized that, but it's, the draft is indicating it's fine. We're just kind of looking at making sure some of the land uses are, again, consistent with what's being proposed. So a long answer to your question.
Mr. Rue, who pays for that, though?
Oh, yeah, the other part of that question was, well, if this would be, if the request is made in a petition to put in sewer, extend sewer and water down to Lions Tap, if that's petitioned, then we would go through a feasibility study and determine who that would, who would pay for that. And presumably, it would be the adjacent property owners that are served by that.
It would be a combination of the homeowners and the property owners down that line.
Right, exactly. But the water, the water loop would probably be a city cost because there's probably no benefit to...
The city to be able to...
It's a benefit to them to extend it down to it, but to make the loop is probably a city cost.
Right. Okay.
I had one more question.
Yes, please.
Mr. Franzen, could you explain what would the density increase be going from rural to low-density residential?
Rural is one house on the property. Low-density residential is two and a half units per acre, so if it's relatively 10, it's 25 units.
Okay. So they'd go from one to possibly being able to develop 25.
That's the theoretical maximum that you can have, and there's all sorts of qualifiers that go with that. To get to two and a half units per acre, you have to have a flat piece of land, no wetlands, no trees, no slopes, in order to be able to get to that particular density. And so you apply all your rules and regulations and judgment. I don't know exactly where that would settle out, but you'd also need to have a public road. And you have an 8% maximum grade limitation on a public road, and there really isn't any way that you can get a public road in at less than 8% if you're coming off the Highway 212, you're coming off of Spring Road. If you're looking at a topographic map, and if there are no other houses in the way on the west side, the flattest axis is to come in from the west, but you have existing houses that are there. So if they have to access it by a private drive, you can have a private driveway up to a grade of 12 and a half percent. You might need something a little bit more than that to get up the hill, but then the question becomes, would you want to allow more than one house on a private driveway up that steepness?
Yes, sir.
I had a different question. Just two of the letters mentioned the notice for the meeting, I guess in two different manners, one on the timing and then what was included. Did you guys see those comments there and do you have any thoughts?
Yes, our public hearing notices are limited to what the exact request is.
Okay.
That's what we're required to do, is to notify what the subject is, where the property is, the date and time of the meeting. I'll just add a footnote, if you have more questions, you call the staff. So anybody reading that, you wouldn't understand exactly what's going on unless you call the staff, ask for a copy of the plan, or came in to look at the plan, then you'd know in more detail what that's about.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
Okay, yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Dovetailing off of Katie's question, you're talking about the different, the steep slope ordinances and the driveway grades and stuff like that. How many developable acres are there on this rural piece that after its realignment of the neighborhood commercial and the rural, which would be 9.9 acres, I think, how many developable acres are there, given our zoning, if they were going for a straight zoning application?
Straight zoning to...
If they're assuming straight zoning on the new, if this goes through, so...
They went through and they want to develop the residential piece. I have no idea how much if it's developable. If it was flat as a pancake and you had existing public roads into the property, I could pretty much tell you, it could be somewhere between two and two and a half units per acre. When you get into slopes like this and you talk about the views that are on the river bluff, you basically are going to have larger lots on slopes of this size. you basically are going to have larger lots on slopes of this size.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
In, in the letters, there were some questions about the retaining walls. And I was kind of curious how, I don't see any elevations on, in these plans, but how tall these retaining walls are, what they're constructive of, what exists presently.
Again, this is not a site plan and it's not based upon an actual grading plan or detailed construction plans. But as of right now, we are showing a twelve-foot-high retaining wall along this area. And then there is a segment of the wall that would be twenty, twenty-one feet high in this location. Not the entire distance, but right in the, in the, in the corner.
Could you, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, since I'm here.
Please, go ahead.
Again, there's a lot of the questions that have been asked just, just recently have been about, how many houses can you get down there if we zone it low-density residential? We're not applying for a rezoning to low-density residential. There haven't been any plans prepared for the residential portion of the property. But I can absolutely say with certainty that the notermans have no interest in coming in and trying to do an urban subdivision on this area. They simply are not. They're, they're also not willing to say at this point that they're going to limit it to a single house. What they would be willing to look at developing plans to fit the development very sensitively into the landscape. And again, they wouldn't come forward with that until they had a plan that they were satisfied with. But that was reason, the reason why I said in my opening remarks, we'd really like to keep the focus on the application that we have here because it's not fair to us to be answering questions about what would it be like if we had a proposal because we don't have a proposal.
No, I understand. I think part of the commissioners here are trying to see a, a little bit about what the end game is. You know, and about, this kind of has a domino effect. If we do this, then you can come back and do that. And so that's what I think we're trying to find a little bit as I'm, you know, looking at some of the commissioners, is trying to determine what the end game is for that. So I appreciate your patience with us.
Sure, no, I mean, I understand that. But again, it's a supermajority vote of the city council to approve a comp guide plan.
Right.
Amendment that would allow any increase in density over the one unit that's allowed right now. So you're still holding all the cards.
Right, understood. Commissioners, without taking this, does anyone have, have any other questions? Yes, sir, please come forth. Can you state your name for city records, spell your last name and give us your address, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joel Wiegert, W I E G E R T. And my wife, you've got a letter from myself and my wife.
We do, thank you.
One oh one three one Eden Prairie Road. I don't have a whole lot of to add to what's been discussed here already, if anything. But one of my issues and problem is, is I don't know what the current application is. I read the agenda that the city had on its website this morning and it says, "Guide plan change from rural to low-density residential." And now I'm hearing that's not what's being proposed here or what's being applied for. That's part of the confusion, I guess. It's also kind of creates some level of distrust as far as what the city knows and what's being made public as far as what's being planned here and what's really going to happen. And we've heard now a number of times and we all know what the, the focus is here. We're not planning residential yet. At this point, we're not talking about residential. That's all we've been talking about, right? I don't have a problem, my wife has no problem. I understand the need for a city sewer down to Lion's Tap. What I don't understand is the huge disconnect between what they're asking for. Why do we need twelve acres within the Musa line to serve Lion's Tap? I think all we're doing here, and I think the writing's on the wall, is a precursor. We're setting this up so we can come back and say, well, listen, we've got ourselves in a Musa line, we're going to start developing this. And we don't then have to address all these other issues that would normally arise if we're going to come to the city and say, we want to put in twenty homes in this property. We heard Mr. Fransen say, this really is a policy issue. I understand this is private property and we're trying to tell them what they can and can't do from our, from our perspective. But this is bluff. I think it's probably within three hundred feet of a wetland. If that's the definition, I don't know. But certainly, it's within three hundred feet of the wetlands of the Minnesota River. As a city, we've decided for some time that this Musa line was going to be on top of these bluffs to protect them. And what we're doing now is taking a little, pretty significant chunk of this and saying, okay, we'll let this go within the Musa, even though we only need to serve this one and a half acres. And then it goes down the line and it goes down the line. And how does the city address this larger problem of what we're going to do to protect these bluffs, if we're going to protect them, when you have to decide parcel by parcel by parcel? And where do you draw the line then? And I think this needs to be addressed objectively from a broad standpoint. The city needs to sit down and figure out what we're going to do with this stuff overall, not parcel to parcel. And that's what we're having here. To me, this seems like a very simple solution. Let's create or extend that Musa line down Spring Road to include the neighborhood commercial property. I don't understand for the life of me why we have to incorporate the other ten or twelve acres. It doesn't make much sense to me. I think that there's a very plausible, creative, not even creative, solution to get to where they want to get and that's city sewer and water down to the Lion's Tap. As far as the parking lot expansion, things of that nature, I'm not sure that that's in front of the commissioner if that's what they're asking for. Again, I mean, I don't know that I, as a neighboring property owner, have any right to tell them what they should or shouldn't do with their property. I, I agree, it is not an extensive expansion, but I think it's pretty invasive. But to me, from what I could tell, based on the plans, there's a lot of dirt that's going to be moved to create those retaining walls. And I do think that that's disruptive. But again, if that's within their property and that's within their rights, unfortunately, as a, in joining my view and seeing down the property, I don't want to look at a retaining wall, but I don't know that there's anything I can do about that. But I do think more detail needs to be provided as before we can really comment with any sort of a legitimate viewpoint, I guess. And, and again, I don't know if that's in front of the commissioner or not. I just, I'm confused. I don't think that the city has been all too upfront with what the hearing notices have been about and really what the objective here is. So, without rambling on too much, again, to me, there's a simple solution here. Let's extend it down to include the acre or two of the Lion's Tap neighborhood commercial property. Let's leave the other thing for another day when the city can address it as a big picture item.
Thanks for coming, Ms. Weathers, I appreciate it. Thank you for the letter as well. City staff, Julia and Mike, if we, I got to open up the floodgate a little bit here. So if we were to figure out a way to get them the sewer and water and keep that Musa line as small as possible, what would be the recommendation?
We just recommend the expansion of the Musa line to cover just the.
And can someone show that, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Chardot, can you show that to me on the map, please? For the rest of our audience? Can you, can you, that's a hard representation of what we're looking at. Can you show us on that other map that you had that was a little bit closer up? That had more of the realignment of Spring Road there and also the Lion's Tap that you could see and a little bit more of the parking lot? Well, there you go.
The line would have to come down from the north and include everything within the red line and the green line.
That's what's currently proposed. Now, if we were just to, Mr. Fransen, if we were just to work on getting the sewer.
No.
That's not what's currently proposed. What's currently proposed is to include all of the noterman property.
I'm sorry, you're right, okay. Commissioners, what's, what kind of comments do you have on that?
I have, I have a question on the Flying Cloud Drive, County Route sixty-one improvements. You mentioned that you had been working in conjunction with the notermans and the Petersons, as well as the county to try to do some sort of land swap or some sort of alignment which would make that intersection safer and the sightlines better. The, I've got an old plan of the concept layout of that, of this section of area of Spring Road and, and Flying Cloud Drive. And then the latest on their internet popped up and it almost looks as though some of those conversations between the city and the county and the property owners have taken hold, that they've realigned from what their initial was to go further east by about, you know, a hundred and fifty feet or so. So it sounds as though there's movement progress going forward with all the governing bodies and the property owners to be able to make that area feasible for both the Lion's Tap and the county and the, and the city and the, the intersection and the traffic. So I'm, no concern there, I'm just kind of curious what, if you, what kind of inhibitions you would have to only having, it sounds as though some of, some of the conversation has been talking about just the neighborhood commercial, inhibitions you'd have just having the neighborhood commercial be a part of that Musa line? Or is this kind of an end game that would be easier and more feasible to have the entirety? I'm, I'm just kind of trying to play it out in my mind.
Well, first of all, your observation is correct. The alignment that we're showing is currently the alignment that Hennepin County Transportation Department is showing as their preliminary design. And so that will have to go through their process. And before it becomes the ultimate design or the final design, in which case they would have a legal description and we would be able to come in and apply for a site plan approval and a rezoning. So that's, that's why we're not coming forward with that today. The, the issue of, the notermans would prefer to have their property within the Musa line because they would prefer to serve the residential development with sanitary sewer, to avoid trying to put drain fields on the bluff and all of the implications of that. The fact of the matter is that before they could come forward with any residential development, it would require a comprehensive guide plan approval, which is a supermajority vote at the city council and a rezoning. And so to add a Musa line expansion to that comprehensive guide plan amendment, to me, it's basically the same burden of proof, if you will. So we'd prefer to have it all in right now, but if the, if the planning commission simply isn't comfortable doing that, we want to be clear, I've, I've been to something like five thousand public hearings in my life and I know that people remember what gets said at hearings like this. They do intend to come forward at some point in the future with plans to develop the residential portion of their property. They intend to do that in a manner that's sensitive to the bluffs and they would like to be able to, since they're going to be spending a great deal of money to extend sanitary sewer down to serve the Lion's Tap, they'd like to be able to hook up whatever residential is part of that development plan. But the limitations that Mr. Fransen identified are very significant. When you talk about public road and length of cul-de-sac and the number of houses you can have on a private driveway and you look at the slopes and what it would take to get a road in there and meet those slopes, very substantial constraints to developing the property for residential. It's definitely not going to be two and a half units per acre, it's not going to be anything close to that. But we don't want to commit at this point to saying it's going to be two or three, we don't know. So the answer to your question is, how much of a hardship would it be? The fact of the matter is, before we could develop it for residential, there would have to be a comprehensive guide plan amendment, there would have to be a rezoning. So to add the Musa expansion to that comprehensive guide plan amendment is not that onerous. Our request is to have it included, but we could live with the alternative.
Okay, Mr. Rue, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the questions about Spring Road and, and so forth. It is the county's desire and the city's desire to, to realign Spring Road to, to make it more perpendicular to, to that, to Flying Cloud Drive. But one thing I do want to point out, that we keep kind of coming back to the site plan that's shown on, on here, I do want to caution the, the planning commission that the location of that access onto Spring Road is not at all set. The county would, I think, Mr. Chardot did indicate that the county was okay with this. I think, I'm not sure that's completely true because we would like to move it further back, but there are issues moving it further back because now you start getting into the curve and the, and the hillside there. So there's still work to be done on where that location of that driveway, it's most desired to be. But the farther away you get from the intersection, the better. But it does create some issues when you, when you do move it further. So I just want to make sure that we're not committing that that's the location of that driveway.
Okay, thank you. Travis, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I guess just to clarify on that, we are not tonight approving anything on a concept plan. We're just doing a guide plan change to include, to include these two properties within the Musa line or within the Musa system, is that correct? So this.
Thank you. So commissioners, if you don't mind, before we take a formal vote, I'd love to just kind of get your thoughts on where you are. And Travis, if you wouldn't mind starting us off and just kind of telling us a little bit about what you think and we'll go from there. Yes, one moment, I'd love to just kind of hear the commissioners and then we'll let you talk, no problem.
I can defer if the gentleman in the audience wanted to make a statement first and then I can, after that.
Okay, go ahead, if you'd like to come forth, thank you.
Commission members, my name is Seaver Peterson. I live at one five nine hundred Flying Cloud Drive. And I'd like to respond, if I could, to Mr. Whit, Commissioner Whicky's comment about the property there at, having to do with the change of Spring Road. And we are the one owner here that's losing property, that will lose property for the road. And I don't have a lot of property there to be losing in that area and so I'm not excited about that. But in talking to the city and talking to the county, it would be a safer thing to have the road realigned. And we recognize that, our family recognizes that. And we are in favor of, of this, of this, what's being proposed here tonight in conjunction with Lion's Tap in that I think it also makes their access and their parking area safer as well. And we're in favor of that. As, as a family, the Peterson family is, is supportive of that. And I just wanted to respond in, in support what I thought you were interpolating and you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Whicky, about that.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, I appreciate your comments. Commissioner, yes.
Shall I begin?
Please.
I think the atypical nature, which might be throwing some of, some of us off that are relatively, that have been on for a year or two, two years less. I've seen in, coming across this panel before where they've done guide plan change and then came in later and did a zoning change and then came in later with a, with a plat. And it, it may seem like it was piecemeal sometimes, but then again, I also like to see the end game, the end result of what's going to be put in place. And I'm trying to grapple in my mind which direction to go. I mean, I'm avid believer of private property rights and especially if somebody wants to be served by public sewer and public water. I mean, that's a benefit to them, it's a benefit to the city. And it's a benefit to all adjacent owners as well on a, a safety side. And especially if they're willing to fit that cost, be able to do so for the, or pay for the benefiting party, I would say that we should move forward on this, on, on providing the, the Musa for that neighborhood commercial at its minimal, at the, at the very least. The rural residential portion is a little fuzzy in my mind because we don't have anything that is being presented now. There could be something presented in the future. Now, kind of understanding what these slopes look like, it would be hard pressed to see anything greater than just a handful of homes in that area. But then again, you know, it, it would take the, the body of this commission and the council to be able to, to see the long-term strategy here in their mind, push forward tonight on both of them. So, I haven't made up my decision yet, but I would say I, anything I do will lean towards the private property rights of the owners of the property and serving them would serve the best interest of the city as well, I think. So, I'll probably interject later. the best interest of the city as well, I think, so I'll probably interject later.
Thank you very much.
I'm in favor of the project as proposed. I think that, I think they made great points, that they'll have to come in front of the planning commission and the council in the future. And frankly, right now, they have the right to have one home there, and so why shouldn't that be able to be served by the sewer line? So even if it's just one home and they don't get anything else, I think that's a property interest that they should feel to have.
Thank you. Katie?
I'm also in favor of fully expanding the Musa line. I'm not in favor, though, of changing the guide plan from rural residential to low-density residential. I don't think there should be that many homes on a prized piece of land that Eden Prairie has, has as part of their city, and I think it's important as a compromise with the surrounding residents to allow the expansion and, you know, success of an existing business, but this was currently undeveloped land that I think should remain undeveloped.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I am also in support of the proposal as it's brought forth this evening. I do understand the concern that has been expressed about the rural residential situation now, but I do think there are enough protections in place through the city processes that we can look at what comes forward at some future point, and I don't particularly want to see us go in the direction of limiting the current owners of that property who have invested a lot of time and spent in that part of the city for a long time. And I understand, too, that in some ways, my background here is, I've been involved with the Heritage Preservation Commission prior to this, and having change happen shouldn't occur when it doesn't seem like the right place to do it. And I don't know that this is the right place to do it. So I am sensitive to the comments that were just made about the undeveloped area, but I do believe in the resource of the Musa line being developed the way it has been proposed here tonight, regardless of my reservations about that, and so that's where I go.
So you're okay with it as, as stated? Okay, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I would agree. I, I, I think I support the proposal as it's been presented, but I also am very mindful that I think some of the neighbors have made the point they're not very much in favor of two things. One is the, the gradual bit-by-bit harm that's done to the bluff, and then secondly, the whole prospect of potentially more dense development in that same area. It seems to me that we need to be mindful of that, should a new proposal come for future development, and that's where we apply the controls to make sure that we preserve the, the property as much as possible. But I would be in favor.
Okay. Mary?
I am struggling with the, with the extending that Musa line to include the residential area at this time, because we don't know what the intentions are for future development of that property. I'm thinking it's just somewhat of the cart in front of the horse, and if it doesn't hamper any, any of the development to the Lions Tap or, or the Spring Road or any of that, I don't have issues there. I'm wondering if that portion of it can be excluded from, at this time, until, and to coincide with when a proposed development goes in.
So that's a good point. I, I guess the thing that's not clear is, how does that impact what you're proposing? I mean, if, if we were to take that route, what, what's your reaction to that?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have applied for the expansion of the Musa to include the entire property, but in order to develop the residential portion, we would need a guide plan change and a, and a rezoning. And so if, if that were the consensus of the majority of the members of the commission, we could live with it. We'd prefer not to. We do intend to come in, we do intend to sewer whatever development occurs on the area. We'd also be open to looking at conservation easements and other things as part of the development we come forward. The one thing I can say is that when we do come forward, we will work closely with the neighbors, we'll work closely with the city staff, and we will not come forward with a proposal unless it's very environmentally sensitive. Short, long answer to a short question. Could we live with it if we were only limited to the music, to the Lions Tap? Yes, we could, we'd prefer not to.
And just to be clear, that preference exists for what reason? I mean, what advantages and disadvantages specifically, to the degree you could discuss them tonight, are you caused by what we're, what has just been mentioned?
Well, simply if, the, the notermans have been waiting a long time to develop their property, they've paid a lot of taxes, we have those figures, I'm not gonna share them with you, certainly open to sharing them with you, but they've been paying a lot of money in taxes for that property. They've always intended to develop the property. If they're gonna be spending the amount of money that they're gonna spend as their portion of the benefit of extending sanitary sewer, as long as you can see on this graphic, they'd like the benefit of it. They'd like the ability to be able to plum whatever development happens on the bluff and not have to do excavation for drain fields on the bluff, which if we're worried about the stability of the soils on the bluff, and you have the availability of sanitary sewer, we see no reason why we wouldn't take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a, yes, go ahead.
I have a question for anyone who wants to answer it. How accurate are the acreage numbers on the existing rural after the new delineation of separation between the existing rural and the neighborhood commercial? 'Cause the figures that I have are 9.9 acres, and my guess is that guide plan change is because it would be less than a 10-acre minimum under the rural current guide plan for one home. Am I inaccurate in that assessment?
The information that we submitted was survey accurate. We did have a survey crew go out onto the subject property and do a survey. The only thing that isn't accurate is exactly where the line is gonna be with the realignment of Spring Road, because that design isn't finished. The rest of it has been certified by a registered land surveyor.
So some of these figures may go up-down depending upon where the actual center line of that Spring Road improvement is gonna be.
Exactly. We, we know there's 1.6 acres in the area that's bounded by the red line, we know that if the alignment of Spring Road is exactly as shown on our drawing, that there's 0.69 acres in the green, but we don't know exactly where the blue line is gonna be until that design is finalized. So for planning purposes, it's pretty accurate.
So Travis, tell me what you were hinting at there with the, you hit the magical number of 10, and you were just under that, so tell me what you were, you were.
What I'm getting at is, they wanna serve the rural portion, and I don't wanna keep them from doing that. And I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that we can serve that rural portion without changing the guide plan of that rural portion, change the guide plan of the neighborhood commercial the way they want it, to include it, and I'm just trying to figure out, because based upon our current zoning and current guide plan, it'd be a, rural would be a 10-acre minimum. Now, I'm not certain if there's some sort of special legalese that the city staff has mustered up that would be able to, or if I'm inaccurate in my assessment, that would be able to accommodate serving of the rural portion. And since they're not looking to develop it yet, it would still remain rural in the guide plan, and when they would want to go in and, and maximize their, the use of their land, they would, at that point, do the comp guide plan change, the zoning change, the Musa would already be a part of that rural, they would get their neighborhood commercial, they would get Lions Tap itself served, so they'd be able to do serve. I don't know if anybody, they may be able to attest to this, but they, they do pay as, I believe they do pay as a rural non-serve, they still pay sewer and, and water fees to the city, even though they don't receive any benefit of that. So that, they've been paying that even though they aren't connected. So if they wanna connect, we try to get them connected, we try to get both of them connected, and then we can, it's a win-win for everybody. Those that are really, the neighbors that are uncertain as to what the future of that rural area is are, will be satisfied. I think the city will be satisfied, and they'll be able to connect. If that's, I mean, something that they were wanting to do.
Mr. Chairman, that's what we're asking for. If you, if you approve our application as it's currently proposed, that's what we would have. We would have no more than that.
So am I just completely off-base? Am I, am I gonna put a yes vote then?
Mr. Franson, do you have any?
There's a question being asked, can we extend a sewer line outside of Musa to serve a parcel that's rural? Is that the question?
Yeah.
I don't have an answer for that. I'd have to do some research.
Yeah, 'cause right now, right now, we're doing comp guide plan change to.
I mean, the laws would tell me that you only extend the sewer to the extent that you're allowed by the Met Council to extend your sewer line to. My guess is if they had a failing septic tank system, and you had a sewer line in the street, and you didn't wanna expand the Musa line, and you wanted to correct the environmental problem, I think we have some health, state health laws that will allow us to do that. So if you're saying you wanted to have some comfort level in having one house, having the ability to hook up the sewer, we could research that and see if we have a legal ability to do that without actually adjusting Musa. Unless Mr. Charlo knows the answer to that off the top of his head.
I think the way the policy is currently configured, you can only extend municipal sanitary sewer within the area that's within the metropolitan urban service area. I'm not saying that there couldn't be some emergency policy difference from that, but I, we're not faced with an emergency. The other thing I wanna be clear about is that we will ultimately be proposing more than one unit, and we're limited to one unit by rural residential. So if the commissioner was talking about, could you make an approval tonight that would limit us to just rural residential and just one lot, you essentially haven't changed anything if you don't approve a guide plan change from rural residential, so we are limited to one lot. But we would be coming back in with a proposal to develop more than one lot, what form that takes, whether that's a planned unit development with a guide change to low-density residential with planned unit development overlay, so we can limit it and include conservation easements or whatever, it's gonna be a complicated proposal. But it's not gonna be one lot, I can guarantee you that, in terms of what the proposal is.
Absolutely. Commissioners, I can tell you that since I've been on this commission, it's been almost a decade, this is probably the first time that I'm really stumped on, you know, what to do and what's the best thing. I mean, I think I agree with all of you in one form or another, I, I like the, I like the proposal in principle, I like the fact that we can expand some parking lot spaces, I don't think anyone here has any kind of issues or problems with that. I like the fact that we can get, we can realign Spring Road, we've all been talking about that for a little bit of time, I know city staff has been working on about that for a while. I don't think there's really any kind of issues with that, I think we all kind of agree that it is safe and probably better for the city that that happens. I like the fact that we could get Lions Tap on city sewer and water, and I think that's appropriate, and I don't think we have any concerns with that. I think where we start running into an issue is, unfortunately, and I know, Mr. Charlo, I know you don't wanna go there, but kinda what's the end game for this property? And I think you've been a little bit more forthcoming, and I do appreciate that, and the idea that, that, you know, the notermans have spent a lot of money and put into this land and taxes and everything else, and, and I would like them to be able to reap some of the benefits of that, but also wanna know what that bluff's gonna look like, you know, in five years. And I think, as I'm seeing some heads nod, that's kinda what everybody's concerned is a little bit. It sounds like city staff, Mike at least, from your perspective, that there's processes in place that we would have a definite say in what goes in that property, that there are some realities of being able to develop that land, which make it extremely difficult, that they wouldn't be able to put, you know, 22 new homes in there. But I think that the, the notermans do wanna come back with a plan to be able to put some homes on that property. And I think that's kind of what's kinda scaring all of us a little bit, is how many homes are gonna go in there, and what's it gonna look like?
I, I guess I would make a couple comments, because I think it's been a very good discussion and, and with a lot of valuable input, but a couple things become pretty clear to me. Number one, the owners of the property have the right to develop it in the future, they have that right. Now, what that means to develop in the future would be determined by discussions that would take place based upon what is submitted. So to me, discussions about whether or not they have the right to develop it in a limited fashion or a less limited fashion, that's really not the purview of tonight's discussion, in my opinion. What I have heard that's very clear is that the bluff is very important, and that whatever we do should be an attempt, or reflect an attempt on all of our parts, to minimize damage to that natural setting. And that really, to me, is the essence of what we're facing tonight. Does the recommended plan minimize damage to the bluff, which is a wonderful-looking natural setting? The improvements that have all been talked about, whether city sewer or any of the others, in my opinion, are pretty smart, but you keep going back to, are we minimizing the damage to that bluff? So that's what I focus on, I haven't quite heard a clear answer to that yet, that, that what we're recommending does that. There is a dimension to the discussion tonight, even though it's not what you're asking, of setting the groundwork for future development. That's really why this expansion of the Musa line is, as you're asking for it. But you have the right for future development, I guess I just focus in on damage to the bluff, I think the remaining improvements are great.
I guess a question I would have to that is, would the development, they absolutely have the right, but should it be changed from the existing zoning and guide plan? Or should they be able to develop based on existing guide planning and zoning, because that was the city's intent of how that land should be utilized based on a bluff, which for other properties, the city has made, you know, deals with developers to preserve the bluff? And if we change the guide plan to low-density residential, we are saying that is our intent down the road to say, yes, we do want higher density here. Compared to now, we are saying, absolutely, we want you to be able to have the right to develop your land, but based on the constraints of the land that you purchased.
Mr. Franson, thank you, Katie.
Just an observation, just based upon your discussion so far, there seems to be enough information to give you a comfort level to expand the Musa line for the Lions Tap. And then the guide plan to kinda tweak their parking area a little bit, so they can square things off and make people get in and out of there easier. But there's not enough information right now to convince you that we should extend the Musa, because it's getting into the debate about what the future use of that property is, and that's not part of the request tonight. They're not asking the city, can we use this property for something else, they're only asking the question about the sewer. So maybe in some sense, you're saying, should we wait a little bit until we know a little bit of more about what they wanna propose, so we can analyze the impact of the slopes and the trees, to determine what is the correct land use for the property? The correct land use may be rural residential when we do the plan, the correct land use may be some version of a low-density residential. But it seems like there's not enough information here, that I am sensing, that you have the comfort level to make that informed decision about including the nine-plus, almost 10-acre piece inside the Musa. And the immediate issue is, they don't wanna keep paying the money for continually pumping and maintaining that system. They want to have some ability to have that restaurant continue to function and serve their customers, and certainly sewer and water is real critical, and we're all very in favor of that, and that's the immediate request that's in front of you now. They're not ready to do that piece, they threw that question out, what do you think about it? If you're not comfortable expanding the Musa line, you wanna wait till there's more information. If you're not comfortable expanding the Musa line and you want to wait till there's more information, there's nothing wrong with making that as part of your decision. If you just have the comfort level for part of it, you can do that.
Hold on one second, Mr. Norman. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, and maybe I'm not getting this correctly, but to me, in my head, it's, it seems like it's their risk. They're paying for it, correct? And they're paying for it to expand over their property. If they come back in front of us and then the city council in three years to ask for three houses on that land, and they say no, well, they just paid a lot for sewer to only serve as one house. And to me, that's their risk, as long as it doesn't harm the environment or anything like that in a way they were not intending. I don't know much about environmental laws, but I would think this is safer for the environment than septic's everywhere for four houses or something. But that, I just want to make sure I'm accurate on that, because that's what I'm thinking.
No, I think you're, I think you're accurate. I personally like what Mr. Franson had to say, and it kind of hybrids it all together to kind of get us to consensus. Because I think right now, we're not necessarily all there. But I think in principle, we worry about the Musa line, but everything else is okay.
I would agree.
Mr. Norman, you had a comment for this commission, please.
Hi, I'm Bird Notarman, owner of Lions Tap. I'd just like to make a comment, you know, I think we're getting so wrapped up. You know, the reason why I brought this whole proposal was because the county contacted me, and I've been wanting to get sewer and water on my property for many, many years. And I've asked the city many times, oh yeah, when Hennepin started, oh yeah, you'll get sewer and water, don't worry about it. I says, well, you know, I bought 10 acres up there to build a couple of houses and to expand Lions Tap. And that's, that has not been a secret to anybody. And, you know, I had hoped in my younger years that I was going to build a house up there and maybe have a couple, two or three more houses up there for my kids. Well, I'm too old to build a house now, but I never, I can't say my children don't want to build. So the neighbors, you know, they're friends of mine. I mean, I like them, I have never had a problem with them, to be honest. You know, in fact, like Mrs. Carlson came in before here with the dogs, and we went along with that, you know. I want to be a good neighbor. And the reality is, they're up there, you know, they built those houses up on the bluff, right? And that's really what I want to do. And I know that a couple of the houses are an acre or not even acre, and one's four acres. Well, I'm not talking about, I mean, we're crying wolf when we're saying that I'm going to put 26 houses up there. Probably the reality, maybe it could be six, or it could be four, it could be eight. I don't know, you know, and I'm not worried about it at this time. And I think it's kind of stupid to just focus strictly on what's going to happen in the future. Because the future is determined by you guys, not me. I can say I want 25 of them up there, and that doesn't mean anything. It's all up to you guys to say, you can only have one, or two, or three, or five, or whatever. And that's, that's the bottom line, so I don't know what we're so worried about this. You know, I want to, I want to get the sewer and water down there for all of my property. And someday, you come back here and you'll decide, well, no, you can only have one, or you can have two or three lots. That's what I'm looking for. That's all I'm looking for. You guys are the ones, you have the power in your hands, I don't. I'm just a taxpayer that paid three-quarter of a million dollars, and some people don't want me to even build one house up there? You know, yeah, because, so they can enjoy, enjoy the property. I want to enjoy my property and take my property and use it. So I'm not talking about making a bunch of money. I'm just talking about, hopefully, in some day, I'll be able to put up a couple of houses there so I can pay for the sewer and the water and all the other expenses that I go in. That's all I have to say, sorry.
Good comment.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, please, go ahead.
I have a question. If we were to do what one of the other commissioners has suggested, leaving it rural residential and not increasing density on that part?
And what Mr. Franson had indicated as well.
Right. What, and we only have a Musa go to that smaller portion of the property. Do we then place the city in the situation and the planning commission and all, and all the processes where we would be in a situation that the new development would have to pay to get the Musa line into that area later and at their cost? So those homes would be more expensive? In order to do that? I don't, I don't understand. If we, if we just put the Musa line into the one spot for the Lions Tap and leave the rest of it unsuared and unwatered, then it's on septic, which I have some environmental concerns about that are very, I think, primary to my way of thinking. But what hap, I mean, just physically, what happens to the Musa line if development proposals come forward and we are questioning how the utilities will be designed for that? Well, we will be involved, but the city council will also, and the ordinances that are in place now.
You mean, is there additional expenses?
Yes.
If they bring that line down just for that?
To develop the land as a result. Or maybe you can't say because we don't have a plan in front of us, and we go around again.
No. You know, property on its own is big enough to have a good number of septic tanks and drainfields in the system. They got 10 acres to do one house. What happens is, is the property owner goes and they put in the septic tank and the drainfields, and then it gets to the point where do they want to spend the money for another septic tank and drainfield, or do they want to extend the sewer and water? So they take a look at what is the least expensive for them in the short term and what's the least expensive in the long term, which is always the sewer and water. Because if you're going to be on the property and it's going to be there for hundreds of years, you don't want to keep redoing the systems and adding new systems and disturbing more property. One line into the property in and out is clearly the best environmental approach to the property and best for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Could I answer your question?
Okay, I guess I have just one more thing to clarify, and then I remain in support of the proposal. But I, the one thing I have not, I'm not completely clear on is what specific damage does full expansion of the Musa boundary to the 11.5 acres cause? Because that, in my opinion, is the only thing that, once again, I believe the development, the right exists for development. I think we've had some good comments about the fact, what you're looking for in the future, they have that right. So I don't think that's something we're going to contest tonight. But let's be really, really clear. If the one remaining controversial point beyond all the improvements is the expansion of that Musa boundary, what's the downside specifically to that? And if we, if that's an acceptable downside, let's go. If it is not, for some reason, I'd like to know, I'd like all of us to be clear on why.
Go ahead, Mr. Ru.
Well, I think the way, I mean, I hear the conversations, and I, to me, and I don't know if this is for sure or not, but I, I believe we can, we can serve rural residential with sewer. I don't think that has any issue. But we cannot serve a property if it's not in the Musa line. So it, the important part is, if you want to serve it with sewer and water, it has to be within the Musa line, the sewer. Whether it's rural or not is, I think, immaterial.
Thank you.
So I think that's the key right there.
I believe that's, yeah, I do, I would agree. I believe that's the key. And in your answer, which helped clarify that, I still am not clear on there being any significant damage by that extension.
By bringing it all the way down.
Sorry?
By bringing it all the way down.
Right. I mean, I, I sense in the room, and I completely understand, that people around the property are probably, would prefer it not be developed. But that's not the point of discussion tonight. I believe that's the nub, the one that you just mentioned, and that is, what's the downside of expanding that line? And I haven't, with that clarification, what it enables, I'm not hearing a negative about the expansion of that line across the full 11.5 acres. If there is one, now would be the time to bring it up, we can consider it, and then move forward.
Well, I think what it would be is opening up Pandora's box to being able to put more homes on that property. I mean, that's the downside.
But that goes back to the issue of it's a precursor.
Right.
And that, to me, is the issue. But once again, the right to develop is a given right. And it is the responsibility of all of us to make sure that development fits what is the best for you folks, is the best for the city, and so on and so forth. But I, what I'm kind of hearing is that it's the issue of it, of an enabler or the first mini-step that makes it more efficient to develop that we're hung up on. And really, in all honesty, that's not our purview tonight. Our, our purview is to make sure that these first steps make sense. And I didn't hear of any evident damage to that full extension. That's why I go back to supporting the proposal with controls in the future. That's my view.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner. So if we did what Mr. Franson suggested tonight, where we took the Musa line just to Lions Tap, so we can get them the sewer, we can get them the water, we can get them the parking lot, we can realign Spring Road, we can do everything in principle, which we all agree in, would everyone be okay with that?
Yes.
In principle?
Mr. Chair, I am agreeing with that. I'm also trying to, I'm also in agreeance with giving the rural side Musa too. And the clarification that just happened pretty much solidified it in my mind. It was a, I was a little fuzzy in my mind before of what was actually being asked. And the clarification by a city engineer clarified it for me. We're being asked to provide the utilities availability to two properties. They're 11.5 acres and 1.07 before, and then they're going to become, what, 1.6 and 9.9 acres after redelineation of the property, plus or minus, given whatever alignment of Spring Road is. And that clarification just solidified it that I would be straight, bar none, approval tonight. That was the only thing that was holding me up.
Of what is proposed tonight?
Of what is proposed in front of us by the project proponent.
You would be the same, okay. So Katie, Mary, you had some, some differences. Tell me your thoughts.
I, I'm, I'm still concerned with the, with changing the Musa line at this point. Going forward, when, when it's proposed, whatever is proposed on that property, does that allow a higher density of homes or structures or whatever on that property?
Mr. Ru.
They're two separate issues. I mean, the Musa line
Can you grab your microphone, Mr. Ru? Thank you.
But my light's on.
Okay.
You can change seats, Rod, if you'd like.
Is it on now?
Yeah, it's good.
The, the Musa line basically allows the city to provide service to that property. The question about what can be built is more of a zoning and guide plan, you know, issue. It's really not, it just, by expanding the Musa line, you're basically bringing that into a sewered area of the city that's right now not allowed to be sewored. So the issues, the future issues about what can be put on that property would be, would come forward in a application.
Well, I'm still having, I still do have difficulty, because I do feel like I don't have enough information to go, you know, to make that decision, determination at this point. I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they're agreeable to go with not extending that portion of the property at this time, the Musa line. I'd be much more comfortable with that. Like I said, I don't feel I have enough information going forward.
Okay, so you would be comfortable with the Musa line just to Lions Tap, and that's it, to get them sewer and water? Okay. Katie, what about you?
I would be kind of on the flip side of fully extending the Musa line, because, you know, as the property owner stated, they are actually playing for a portion of everybody else's sewer as well. And I think they have a right to those utilities that are provided to the rest of us. And I think as Mr. Ru said, it's more based on the guide plan and the zoning that would change density. And we should not change the guide plan for the rural residential to the low density, which would restrict the density more than giving them the right to utilities.
So you would
I would say
tweak the request a little bit.
I would tweak the request to everything included except maintaining the rural residential guide plan instead of low density.
I think, I think there's some clarification.
It says right here, guide plan change from rural to low-density residential.
If I may clarify, and staff or somebody, I, I think what they're asking for tonight is, it's getting lost in translation on the, what they're requesting. They presently have 11.5 acres of rural residential. They presently have 1.07 acres of neighborhood commercial, which the Lions Tap sits on. All they're doing is they're redelineating where that boundary is to 9.9 acres of rural residential and 1.6 acres, plus or minus whatever the align, and then including some portion that will be given up by the existing County Road 4 alignment and realignment. So there's really nothing that is a guide plan change, per se, other than redelineation of its own property boundaries. The one thing that they are asking is a Musa, and I think it got lost in translation. I think I fell prey to death by too much information. There was plans of a plat that we weren't, that they weren't asking for a plat, and there were plans for this and plans for that. There were so many plans that were in my packet that I think I lost sight of actually what they were asking. They're just asking for utilities.
I, I think there's some
Can we add?
Issue here with the documents.
Yeah, there's a, there's a disconnect in the document. I will tell you that the staff recommendation on page two with the three bullet points is the exact request, and that's within the public hearing notice. What's in error is in the description on page one, and I think that's where the confusion.
So which color is correct?
Are you talking about there's an error on the staff report on page one?
Yes, page one, it says guide plan change. And in the agenda, if you look at the agenda
This is correct?
If you look at the agenda
This is correct. The staff report is correct.
You have three requests in front of you. You've got the rural residential, which is basically part of the Peterson property, and Spring Road. That's going to go to neighborhood commercial for the expansion of the park. The guide plan amendment covers everything. The rural residential piece, this is moving the Musa line, the entire 11.5 acres. And they have the concept review on the 11.5 acres, but specific only to Lions Tap.
So which color is correct?
Not changing the guide plan from rural residential to low rin
Okay.
There is no request from rural residential to low-density residential for any portion of the property.
So the staff report is correct.
Staff report's correct.
Because I've been looking at that all along, so when she's been talking, I've been confused. But she's looking at a different document.
And I, yeah, Katie, I was looking at the wrong request too.
I am okay with the project as planned.
So I guess, I guess one last comment, and then, well, we'll see if somebody else has another comment. But I don't see any evident damage in what's being proposed. And I do believe that, at the same time, significant concern has been expressed about future development. That will have to be addressed when those proposals are brought forward. But I don't see, I've not heard any, anything from anyone about evident damage for what's being proposed tonight. Does it have a dimension as an enabler? Yes, it does, and that leads you into that discussion of development. So I think we're going to have to be careful and prudent when we look at development. But my vote is, let's go ahead and approve what's been asked for.
So Commissioners, I think we've had good discussion tonight. It sounds like that we have more of a majority vote for yes and that we can go back to the city and tell them with almost one voice of what this commission expects. Is that an accurate statement?
Totally. I think after we got clarified which sheet of paper we're supposed to be looking at.
Okay.
I could have cut an hour.
Okay, so with that being said, are there any other follow-up comments or any concerns, either from the audience or from this commission, to be able to move forward? Not seeing any, I will, yes, sir, please come forward.
Joel Uecker, I'm just going to make one comment, because I'm ready to jump out of my seat. There's mass confusion here. What are we doing? What are we voting on? You're exactly right. You're asking the question, what's the harm? What's the purpose, I guess, would be my response to that. What's the harm of having them come forward with a plan that you can then decide? Makes sense, let's extend the Musa line, let's move forward. Why are, why are we doing this already when we don't know what is even the plan?
And I think they, they do and will come to this commission with a plan, and then we can decide at a further date. we can decide at a further date on what we want to do.
I respect that. I guess the harm is Pandora's box, and that's the point. It just doesn't seem to me to make much sense. And nobody's saying you can't move the Musa line in the future, but why don't we wait to see what it is, and then we'll make that decision? Because I don't, maybe you'll correct me, I don't believe anything causes harm if that Musa line isn't moved now, other than the lines tap. I'm certain, nobody's disagreeing with that, given the Musa line. But why all the other property? I, I just, I don't see the reasoning behind that at this point, until, let's get some further detail, and then you make your decision.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Charlo, I'll give you 30 seconds, and then we'll move on.
I just wanted to reiterate the fact that in my introductory comments, I stressed that there was no residential rezoning or guide plan change as part of this.
Right.
The notarments are going to pay a quarter of a million dollars to extend utilities. They'd like to be able to develop their property with utilities. We recognize they're guided and zoned rural residential, and anything above that will require a guide plan change and a rezoning.
Thank you very much. Mr. Charlo, I've been on this commission for a long time, too, and I do want to say that your presentation was well done. Thank you very much. Okay, so Commissioners, with that being said...
Mr. Chair, before I make the, the motion, I'd just like to say that I think we were confused, our body was confused, because we were looking at two different sheets of paper with two different requests on them. And I'm sorry that we had to put the audience and everybody through all that. But after we got that clarified, I think we're pretty much in consensus.
And I think it was, I think the discussion was needed. I think, I think the end results is a good one for everyone, so...
Correct.
Let's move forward.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of the comprehensive guide plan change from rural residential to neighborhood commercial on 1.7 acre, 1.07 acres, comprehensive guide plan amendment to expand the Musa boundary to include 11.5 acres and plan unit development concept review on 11.5 acres.
Second.
Do we need to, do we need to put the plan stamp? Do we need to stamp those? The plans?
September 5th.
September, okay. Based on plan stamp dated September 5th, 2013, and staff report dated October 11th, 2013.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Norman, you make a heck of a hamburger. Keep making them. Thank you very much. Mr. Charlo, thank you again for your time and patience. We appreciate it. All right, with that being, you're welcome, thank you. With that being said, the next agenda item is a code amendment sculptures, and I believe we have Mr. Franzen to go over that with us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
You want to encourage public art, so how do we do that without being in conflict with our current sign ordinance? So what we're doing is we're adding sculpture and statuary to the definition of accessory structures. We're going to delete sculpture and statuary from the definition of a sign. We're going to add setback requirements, because we're going to treat it like a garage or a tennis court or a shed, et cetera. And we're going to add a height requirement. And the height requirement, we establish at 15 feet, because that's the maximum height of a detached accessory structure in all the residential districts. The setback requirements for 10 feet in residential is consistent with the normal sign setbacks that you have that identifies a subdivision. And the setback for 20 feet in the commercial districts is consistent with the setback for signs in the commercial districts. We just want things far enough back from the road that you don't create a site division distance problem. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
All right, Commissioners, any comments or concerns at all?
I just had one question. I was reading like the front yard setbacks and everything. Did the city have any concern of what some site triangles could look like if you had a large sculpture that was maybe just 10 feet back? Or would that probably be a pretty rare occurrence?
You know, when we look at businesses that invest in fountains and sculptures, they're usually in relatively large sites, and they're always near the entrance, like we had with United Health Group, for example. So I don't think we're going to run into that situation on your typical smaller office commercial sites, because it costs money to be able to do that. And the signs and those locations are more important. Where public art becomes a little bit more important is in residential districts, if you want to create some sort of identity or theme that goes along with that. And so here's an opportunity to have some public art separate from the sign.
And the only other question I had, Mike, was when proposals are brought forward in the future for accessory structures, I'm just not familiar with, there's a pretty good set of criteria for evaluating those to include their artistic merit and things like that, or...
No. I think it would be very difficult for us to put any sort of...
I shouldn't have used, that was a bad example, artistic merit.
I mean, but it's, the question is, well, how do you define, you know, what is good art, what isn't good art, what's a good sculpture, what isn't a good sculpture? Everybody has different opinions about it, much in the same sense about the appearances of signs in general. And so we go back to our primary goal of regulating the height and bulk and setbacks.
Okay.
And you're going to leave the design up to the individuals that do the design. And we're going to have something that goes up, and we're all go, I can't believe somebody did this. And then someone else is going to go by and say, this is the most beautiful thing that I've ever seen.
Well, it just raised, it just raised in my mind, I mean, if you look at the, the world of art, there's anything from highly offensive to some people, all the way through to the opposite. And I didn't know, how does the, the city control what goes up in sculpture without getting into the...
We, we don't do that any more than we do what a house looks like.
Okay.
So if you want to build a single-family home, if you meet the setback requirements and you meet the height requirement, we're leaving it up to the private sector and the homeowners to decide how they want that to look.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good discussion. Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience? I'm not seeing anybody that has any questions or concerns? Nope. Okay, so with that being said, we do have a motion that we need to make. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, move to recommend of the code amendment related to statutory, statuary and sculptures.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. We have a planner's report tonight, cell towers, mechanical equipment, and screening. Julie, do you get the lucky straw for that one?
I did get the lucky straw for that one.
You did, okay.
It was short, but I got it.
That's all right.
So this evening, staff has a PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to go over with you. The city council had directed staff to look at a text amendment regarding screening of telecommunication equipment, based on some previous conversations that were had within the city. So you can see by these examples, these are photos of ground-mounted telecommunication equipment in city right-of-way, which is what the city council wants us to look at, specifically screening of these types of, this type of equipment, rather, in the right-of-way. As you can see, it's very exposed. There's tubes and wires that are open to the elements, open to potential for vandalism, those types of things. So there are three different ways that this material can be screened, either by cabinets, by fencing and landscaping, or by building. So you'll see examples of all of those, and we're looking for some of your comments after reviewing the different examples. So this photo is an example of cabinets. This is not screening of telecommunication equipment, but rather screening of electric, phone, cable, those types of utilities. And this is not a city-imposed requirement, this is essentially an industry standard. All of these folks have gone and screened their equipment based on what they wish to do, not what they've been required to do.
And when you say screening, you're saying building cabinet around it?
Exactly, screening from public view.
Got it.
Again, this is another example of either telephone, electric, or cable screening in a cabinet. As you can see, those are within the public right-of-way. And a third example. This is an example of screening of telecommunication equipment within a building. So that first photo you saw of all the tubes and wires that were exposed, all of that is screened inside of this building. This particular example is on private property in a parking lot. Staff obviously can recognize that if a building were constructed in the right-of-way, that may be problematic, first of all, from visibility, second of all, from snow storage or the potential for being hit by vehicles that may leave the roadway.
How well do you know this particular example? And I guess the question that I have is, is the equipment that's inside, this is a little bit about my background with the media and whatnot, and the, the equipment that is in there, does it need to be cooled at all? Is that the reason why that, you know, we call it like a pillbox?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that I don't know specifically.
Okay.
So I, I can't speak completely to that issue.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
This is another example, just closer up, so that you can see what the building material looks like. As you can see, on the right-hand side of that picture, there is a little bit of a fence there. That fencing is screening some additional telecommunication right, or communication ground-based equipment. And this is an example of screening that is done by landscaping only. As you can see, if you look past the trees, there is exposure of the tubes and the wires and other elements, but they are screened from public view. And this example is screening done with a fence. So it's screening just for visibility purposes, not for protection of the equipment from either the elements or potential for tampering. So staff recommends that within right-of-way, a cabinet is the best way to screen the property, or screen the ground-based equipment, rather. On private property, it can be screened with a fence or cabinet, building and landscaping can work, since you have additional room in which to implement those screening mechanisms. So staff is looking for some feedback for you, and we intend to move forward based on that feedback with a text amendment to bring forward for your consideration.
So I just have a few questions really quick. Has there been any kind of vandalism that we're aware of, of any of these open structures?
Amazingly, we're not aware of anything.
Which really surprises me as well. I know there's one that's out by, that I'm familiar with, that's out by, what is it, Riley Lake Barn, where it's just wide open, and it's right by the road, and it's easy to see, and I'm surprised that kids don't, I won't give them any ideas on talking ways. I'm, I guess I'm just surprised that a company like T-Mobile or anybody else would be okay with that, because there would be a pretty huge expense if someone wanted to do something pretty big. So I guess from, from my perspective, I would want to secure that property as best I could. I'm not a big fan of a big box sitting in the middle of the road, but yeah, there's wires going all over the place anyway, so I guess if you're looking at it, it's kind of, it is what it is, right? I don't know, what are you, Commissioners, what are you thinking?
Well, I guess, I guess a little, little more background, if we could, and that is, when the council asked for some kind of proposal here, what were the negatives that they identified the way things look today?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's my understanding that there were some concerned neighbors that had this ground-based telecommunication equipment in their, in their neighborhood, and they didn't appreciate the aesthetics of it.
So they didn't appreciate the way it looked?
Correct.
Specifically, hence the screening.
So, yeah, so if you get a little more specific about that, one solution would obvi, obviously be zero visibility of any such structure, whether it's in a box or it's not in a box. I mean, if you're really saying, I don't want to see, or if someone is saying, I don't want to see any man-made variation of this, then you totally cover it up. The other, the other thing would be, if it's just a matter of it looks sloppy and would look more organized in a housing context of some kind or a container, I can understand that, too. So I'm, I'm just not completely clear the extent of the negativity for the way things are now, because you could propose that it'd be totally covered up with natural shrubbery and all that kind of stuff, and no man-made structure, if you've seen it all. Or you could say it's really a matter of giving, bringing more order to it, protecting it, et cetera, and so you put some housing or boxing around it. I'm not quite sure which arena we're in.
Is, yeah, I mean, is there any safety concerns at all? Has anyone brought up any kind of safety concerns?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, to the best of my knowledge, there have not been any safety concerns that have come forward. The, the discussion that was brought forward to the council was simply, if you're looking at the examples that are on the screen right now, I believe these are the specific examples that were brought forward at that, at that conversation time.
So I guess with me, if there's no safety concerns, we take that out of the mix, and you take out of the mix of someone being able to come do something. I guess if I lived in that neighborhood, lived across the street, I would rather look at bushes, shrubs, maybe small fence, but not necessarily a big steel structure.
So would you go for, would you, you're basically saying...
I'm kind of mixed, because I'm in the industry, and I would want to put a steel cage around the damn thing. But, but that aside, and if there's no, if there's no concerns for safety or, because that would be another thing, would a kid do something stupid and hurt himself?
Well, the other, well, and, and building on what you're saying, another option would be that for safety and, and vandalism purposes and so on, we do want to enclose these.
Right.
But at the same time, we have an aesthetic issue, which says we want them to disappear visually, and that's what I wasn't clear on. So the extreme solution would be probably to box and camouflage. I'm not saying that's a good idea, but that would be the most you could do, and you could back off of that.
But you're, you're getting to my point. I mean, to me, it's just my opinion on it. You look at this one, right there...
Right.
Versus this one...
Yep.
The dark green.
Yeah.
I think the dark green blends way better. It's the gray that, when I'm driving, you see this big giant gray box, and it looks terrible.
Well...
Could we require a certain coloring? I mean, it looks, look how much better that blends, you know?
Could we, could we put a box around it, I guess, and throw some shrubs around it to make it almost go away, right?
All I'm saying is, I think the coloring of the metal, it does something, just my personal thing.
Right. Are we overthinking this? We, we're tending to do that tonight. We don't need to be here another two hours.
The cabinet is basically, it's, it's, the industry standard for cable is a box, the industry standard for power is a box, the industry standard for phone is some sort of a box. So if it's a utility, it's a public utility...
It's a box.
You've got this, you put this in a box.
And that's because of, there is, there is a safety issue with that exposure.
There is, there is.
A huge safety issue.
The reason for the boxes, if you're in the right-of-way, you've only got 11 feet, you're not going to get enough room to put plants and shrubs there.
Right.
And who maintains it? You're not going to have irrigation. I can tell you, for as long as it takes for the telecommunication issue to go through a process to try to get plans and everything done through their corporation, to get them to come out and actually replace and fix the shrubs is not going to happen. If you have room on private property, you have the landowner that has interest in how that's being viewed. So if it's going to be in the right-of-way, the best solution with space is limited is they have a box that blends visually.
Okay.
You can also deal with the safety aspect, if the safety aspect is a concern.
Yes, Rock, please.
Well, the one thing that always, in any of these situations, you know, it's not really a, it is a safety issue, but it's more of a safety issue for traffic, is the sightlines. So, you know, we always struggle with, with utilities, they always want bigger boxes, taller boxes, which keep, and there's limited space, so there's always an issue with, with sightlines. The other point is about the color, is it was several years ago, we had some concerns about signal cabinets and, and so forth. And there are silver or gray, I guess. And so there was a, there was a desire to have those colored darker, you know?
Which is kind of what we're looking at right there on the screen.
Right. That was, that doesn't work, because in some of these situations, especially with electronic equipment, if you have a darker color, there's a lot more heat generated inside there, and so you end up with, I mean, there was some other issues with it, it didn't adhere very well, and it peeled, and it looked worse than, than it, you know, than it was just left alone. So some of these situations, I think they have to have a lighter color, because they don't want to generate heat.
You're going to Chicago.
Yeah, Doug, on it.
Okay, fair enough. Well, Commissioners, what do you, I think we want some sort of screening, right, around them, because some of those open, we don't like.
But I think that proposal pretty well covered that in two different situations.
Right.
I don't even think we will vote.
What's that?
Isn't this just a plan?
Yeah, this is just, this is just a, give direction to Julie and Mike.
This is comments and direction. If there's anything out there that you just absolutely don't want us to do, tell us. If there's anything out there that you just absolutely don't want us to do, tell us.
Is, is the direction of the city right now to make this, or ordinance, or whatever mandatory ordinance that would be for telecom only, doesn't a lot of this stuff kind of get weeded out in conversations with staff? I mean, I'd hate to just enact another ordinance by Big Brother, just because we want it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the direction this would be going is staff would come back at a subsequent meeting with specific language for your adoption, specific to telecom, ground-based equipment in public right-of-way, not on pub, not on private property, but within the public right-of-way, because that is where we've seen the concern.
So in, within the right-of-way only, and not on private, property, okay?
That was the primary direction from the council, because that was the example given by the homeowners, that was in the right-of-way, and I took it upon myself to kind of expand it. If you're going to have a standard for within the right-of-way, we should have a standard for being on private property. It's just that the private sector is taking care of that without us having rules and regulations. If it's mechanical equipment, it's no different than heating, ventilation, air conditioning units that we require to be screened in apartments in commercial office and industrial districts.
That, that's kind of what I was getting at, is, I mean, we already take care of a lot of this stuff already.
Right. So I would say, right there, as you guys see on there, Commissioners, as far as staff recommendations, I would say that that's pretty much in line. Would you agree?
Yeah, I have a question. Would that include, would you go back to all the existing equipment and say to enclose, or, I mean, and how much does it cost to...
If, if they come in for a permit to add something...
Okay.
Then we would be able to make them comply with the new rules and regulations. If they don't add anything, I don't know if we have a legal basis to go back there and say fix.
I see. Thank you.
I would say first and foremost, and I'll hold on one second, I would say first and foremost is that, you know, the citizen's safety should be, you know, present, and if there's any indication that all these cables and stuff that are open, don't get a cabinet is an issue, then we need to address that, for the parents and everybody else that has not only teenagers, but just toddlers that could walk up and stick their finger, hand, or whatever in it, that would be a concern. Ann, go ahead.
I have something that's really not quite on point, but I see it sufficiently often that I, it bothers me, but I figure there's probably not a good answer, and that is, you've got a cabinet, it's in the right-of-way, but some of the power equipment to clear sidewalks or driveways throws snow and/or hits the cabinet and becomes dislodged. The time between that happening and anything being done to correct that situation sometimes is lengthy. I mean, I can drive by, you know, a year or more before I see anything actually happening. I don't know who gets the calls, except you folks, or if somebody has enough time to go look and say, oh, that's an AT&amp;T something or other, but then where do you call to get it fixed? So what my thought has always been, in those situations where it's in a neighborhood, and the kids are either there by the bus stop, and they walk by it, or those kinds of things, but I don't think there's a good answer. At least, I've never known of one, and so I, I'm, you know, that's like a problem I don't know if we know how to solve. And I'm always hopeful that the providers drive around and find it eventually and get it fixed, because it doesn't seem like it's an easy process to get it fixed.
I would just assume that if someone had a problem with it, they'd probably call the city first, right? And the city would get them...
Yeah, that's what my concern is, so what happens?
The city would get them to the right place, hopefully.
Try to figure out whose property that is, and whether it ever gets fixed in any kind of manner.
We're going to have a record of the permit, and a record of who applied for it, and contact at the care, where we see the change, when they're likely to come out and take a look at things, if, if it isn't working, number one, people aren't getting reception, they're going to do that. Or if, because you've got so much more data coming out, you've got to change out the antennas or add more antennas. So my guess is, they're probably looking at the grid on a periodic basis to make improvements, and it might become more self-releasing than we think.
My, my only other comment is, just quickly, and if this had a large cost implication, then I'll back off, but on the second point, on private property, someone had made the point that landscaping has to be kept up, so I don't know whether that's a very viable solution. Should we be going with the higher standard of the cabinet and/or building on private property as well? Or because of the cost, and maybe that is over restricting people, we shouldn't. That's the only other comment I had, or question.
Well, obviously, the, without the city's involvement, the private sector is making that financial investment and working with the private property owners, I think that's part of their accepted practice. They're going to do it, this is what it costs us to build this type of a building or structure.
In other words, I was just recommending maybe fence and landscaping be eliminated from the second point, so we have a, a stronger standard, but I don't want to cause a lot of cost for organizations or, or private citizens.
In other words, you wouldn't want that an option, you'd want the cabinet.
Yep. Well, it goes back to the safety issue, the theft issue, and so on, but I don't know how much these things cost, and I don't want to jack up costs for people by saying that. I would, if others were in agreement, we could eliminate the fence and the landscaping as options for private property, and you're there.
I'd just go with cabinet.
I guess I would just eliminate private property from the ordinance entirely, and they can, they're already doing it themselves. Right-of-way is owned by a governmental agency, and so we have certain standards that we want for safety of traveling public and pedestrian public and bicycling public, and seems like the private property, they're already doing it anyway, because it's part of the competitive marketplace, so, I mean, why infringe and impose new ordinances that it's just going to bog down some architect anymore? I mean, it's just my thought.
If, if someone came to any one of you and said, I want to enter into a lease agreement with you for the property, and I want to put this tower here, mechanical equipment here, you're going to tell them exactly what you want, you don't want to see this. And so that's what happens as part of the lease. Whereas in the right-of-way, they're not leasing from anybody, they just have the right to put up the tower. So we're kind of people that are setting material standards for what we want, and if it's just in the right-of-way, and you're comfortable with, I think what you're saying is, we're comfortable with how it's being handled on private property, we just want to do a better job in the right-of-way, and because of the space limitation, let's go with the cabinet approach.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay, have you gotten enough out of us? Okay.
I know what to do.
Julie, you're good?
I'm good.
All right. Okay, any others' planners' report, sir?
None this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Members' reports, light rail.
Well, it's heating up. Even more. So Eden Prairie's portion has actually been shortened, just to some less stations to help with project costs, and you guys may have heard that the recommendation was made to run shallow tunnels through the Kennelworth neighborhood, which Minneapolis is not happy about, and there is a vote by the Met Council this week to say that this is our plan of how to run the light rail with, you know, these tunnels through here, and this, you don't exactly how the line would work. And that's this week, and then they will be moving on after that to municipal consent, which currently, everyone except Minneapolis would be kind of the lynchpin.
Minneapolis would be?
Mm-hmm. Of saying, we're not, they're not really happy with having the freight and the shallow tunnels go through Kennelworth, they kind of want to either light rail or freight.
Are they still talking five stations for Eden Prairie? You said it was shortened, so what do they...
Yes, so Mitchell was eliminated.
Oh.
So Southwest would be the last station, so I believe it would then be four.
Four, I see, thank you.
Yep.
What about funding? Is there any new information as far as funding?
There's not much at the moment. I mean, they're still looking at getting half from the federal government, and then getting another half locally.
Okay.
And if longer this draws out, the dice are picked, so still getting that.
Right. Mr. Franzen, any other comments as far as light rail that you're aware of? Or Mr. Rue, if that mattered?
Actually, none at this point, although we are thinking about bringing a presentation on the municipal consent plans to the commission on October 28th.
Okay.
And trying to get that out to the other commissions that are represented on the Citizen Advisory Committee, before the council holds their meeting on that in December.
Okay, Mr. Rue, anything to add?
No.
Okay. All right. Under Members' Report, Commissioner Lee, you will be missed. We thank you for your...
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Five years of service, did I hear?
I've enjoyed it, learned a ton, very memorable final meeting.
You'll miss us dearly, I'm sure.
Tremendous good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
You've been a great vice chair, we appreciate all your service, thanks again.
Thanks.
Okay, with that being said, are there any continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, move to adjourn.
Second.